Please help me welcome at this time doing our oli Kai Manabarkarisi.
Reintroducing the well-known former member for the presentation. And now for the presentation of colors, the Hawaii Youth Challenge Academy.
Thank you, Laney. Please help me welcome singing Hawaii Pono'i, also from Dream Hawaii Studio, Jasmine Sousa. Thank you, Jasmine. At this time, please help me welcome the Senior Pastor of New Hope Hilo, Hawaii, doing our blessing Pastor Sheldon Laxina.
Well, happy holidays, everyone. Merry Christmas. You know, when I walked in, first of all, I thought it takes a lot of work to put something like this together. So thank you to all of those who put their hands into it, as well as for the family and friends who are here, because this is a special day today. So thank you and welcome, everyone. Can we thank all the volunteers, all those who put the work into today? And thank you for the honor of being able to do the blessing today. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your leadership and all that you do in our county and throughout the state. So thank you. Let's bow our heads as we pray. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful that we can gather together as a community and be unified in a way like this. Hawaii is a special place because we are family, we are Ohana. And so when we gather together like this, we don't just go through a routine or something that is done for a format. We do this because we are family. We do this because we love one another and we have the spirit of aloha. And so we do pray for all those who are being in office right now and those who have been elected. They are representing the people and the community. And so we pray for each individual here on stage. We pray for Aaron and Miley, Karen and Matt, Ashley and Sue, Valerie, Herbert and Rebecca. We pray for your blessing over them, your wisdom, your guidance. And as they represent the people, may we, as the people, continue to bring our support. And as a community, we will make not just our community better, but our families will become better and stronger. And that's what makes us who we are. We thank you for all of these things and we pray this in your precious name. And we all said together, amen. God bless, everyone.
I think you can be seated. Yeah. So at this time, we are going to welcome our Mayor.
Yes, the Honorable Mayor Harry Kim with the welcome speech.
First of all, contrary to common belief, I did not borrow this coat from my son. I want to congratulate, but first of all, I do want to thank each and every person that sit here to represent the County Council in the next two years. To do that, just to run, is a commitment. To commit the next two years of their lives is a big commitment of time, family, and everything else. I know most of them. I'll get to know the rest of them. They're good people and I look forward to working with them. In regards to the job of the County Council, I don't know what most of you think it is, but I always used to tell them, what would prompt you to do a job like this? Because I know the difficulty of it. So I do to act them personally for stepping up to the plate, as they say. Thank you for being there for us. To the rest of you, I think we are very grateful that they are here, willing to take on this task. To all of us, we thank them. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so at this time, we are going to be having our administration of oaths to our council members here. So please help me welcome the Third Circuit Court of our State of Hawaii Judge, the Honorable Greg Nakamura.
So could you please stand and raise your right hand and sit after me? I do solemnly swear a firm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Hawaii and that I will faithfully discharge my duties as County Council Member to the best of my ability. So congratulations to you all. Good luck to you.
Aaron Chung, Council Member District 2.
Miley Maderis David, Council Member District 6.
Karen Eoff, Council Member District 8.
Matt Kanieli Kleinfelder, Council Member District 5.
Ashley Kirkowitz, Council Member District 4.
Susan Su Keohokapu Leloi, Council Member District 3.
And DeVal, Valerie T. Poindexter, Council Member District 1.
Herbert Tim Richards III, Council Member District 9.
Rebecca Villegas, Council Member District 7.
So at this time, I'd like to welcome, well, you're already up here. The Honorable Aaron Chung of our Hawaii County Council to address the Council Chair.
Ladies and gentlemen, friends, family, distinguished guests. This is really an exciting time for a lot of people, and particularly to our freshman members and for their families. And I'm going to be breaking from the traditional script of a councilperson elects, addresses, speaks, and if you don't mind. Because this is all about these people right now. So instead of talking about general stuff, I want to give you my impressions of each of these individuals, if I may. And I have to say, it's caused a lot of apprehension on their parts because they knew it was coming. And I did talk about, you know, how exciting a time it is and how special a moment it is. And you know, anytime you see Mayor Kim in a suit, you know this has got to be a real special event. So first of all, I'd like to start with our freshmen. And if I could ask Matt Kanieli Kleinfelder to please again stand up and, you know, be acknowledged. I stayed up till 2:00 last night doing this thing, so I'm going to read it, okay, if you don't mind. Now, Matt is the newly-elected Council Member representing District 5, Puna, mostly Upper Puna. He came to Hawaii about 18 years ago, having moved from California. And just like so many others, he was drawn to our island by its unique vibe and integrated well into the fabric of our culture. He really represents a success story of sorts. He worked his way through being a glass blower, I understand, pizza delivery man, bartender, we can talk later about that, yeah? waiter, and now with his wife, running a highly popular restaurant, Liko Leua. I think he will bring a sorely needed businessperson's perspective to our council. Sue Leloi, who knows Matt the best among all of the council members, has used the following words to describe him: "A good listener, hardworking, thoughtful, and genuine." And I think we should all be so lucky to be described that way. Again, Matt Kanieli Kleinfelder. Next, I'd like to introduce Rebecca Villegas. District 7, representing Kona. A fifth-generation kamaaina who, interestingly enough, although being born and raised in Kona, was actually born right here in Hilo, Hawaii. She worked many years for Kona Brewing Company, assisting in many aspects of its operation, including the all-important branding. She now runs her own event management business. She is passionate about protecting the environment, particularly as it relates to shoreline access and management. But what really caught my attention about Rebecca is how her life experiences, particularly as a single mom, greatly shaped her present views towards those less fortunate. So welcome to the council, Rebecca. Now, our third freshman councilperson is Ashley Kirkowitz. Ashley. She is representing District 3, Lower Puna. Oh, you're Ash... I told you, I was working till 2:00 last night. District 4, Puna. Ashley's great-grandfather was one of the original Sakatas who immigrated from the Philippines to come to Hawaii, and her roots in the Pahoa area run deep. Now, she may or may not remember this. When I first served on the council way back in the late 1990s, she interviewed me for her radio program. At that time, Ashley was only 13 years old. And she was already producing her own radio show, which was geared, among other things, toward educating the younger set. You know, and she's, in my opinion, since that time, she's basically been a child prodigy. And community leaders have been, have had her on their radar screen as being someone who would do very great things in the years ahead, and she has. She's a dynamic individual, who is a public relations and planning expert. She was also one of the organizers of Pu'ho'nu'a Opuna, also known as the Hub, which was the volunteer organization created to provide supplies, services, hot meals, and information to lava refugees. Ladies and gentlemen, Ashley Kirkowitz. Now, next, I'd like to move on to our second-term councilmembers, starting with Tim Richards, Herbert Tim Richards. Tim represents District 9, I hope I'm getting that correct, right? Waimea Waikoloa Kohala. Not to be outdone by fifth-generation Rebecca, Tim is a sixth-generation kamaaina and fourth-generation to be involved in ranching. Because of this, he has a historical perspective and understanding of his district, which, and I mean no offense to anyone here, but which none of the members of the County Council can match in their own districts. Tim is a hard-nosed and hard-working individual, and he's a man of his word. All of those traits owing, I suppose, to his cowboy upbringing and longstanding ties to his community. He has still not quite gotten used to the pace of government and how slow it operates. And he has not been shy in voicing his frustration to us from time to time. He is passionate about sustainability and self-sufficiency, particularly as it relates to agriculture, tourism, and energy. And he's also been a consistent advocate for fiscal responsibility and accountability. His is a voice we certainly need to pay attention to. But notwithstanding all of that, I respect Tim because he is a person of integrity. Tim Richards. Next, Sue Leloi. And I know she's really cringing about this, but Sue, please stand up. Sue represents District 3, right? Hilo. And just like Ashley, you could tell early on that Sue was destined for special things. She was hired to work as a County Council staff person just after graduating from college. And I can't be certain, but if I had to guess, she probably has logged more years with the council than many of us put together. And I also think it's important to note that she worked during the time that I've always categorized as being the golden age of the County Council. At that time, you had high caliber members or individuals like former Mayor Steve Yamashiro, former Mayor Lorraine Inoy, you had Russell Kokubun, Kalani Shudi, Taka Domingo, Jimmy Arakaki, Merle Lyon, I think Brian DeLima too, right? Brian was around. You know, these are people that we look up to. And they were great role models and mentors for her. And as a result, she has a wealth of institutional knowledge which is unmatched on this present council. She's smart and articulate and possesses land use and planning chops, the level of which we have not seen on the council since Bobby Jean Liedhead Todd was a member over 15 years ago. She's also fun to have around. Sue Leloi. Next, I'd like to introduce Miley David. District 6, Volcano Ka'ou, South Kona. Miley joined the council at the same time as me, and I respect her as a councilmember and as a person. Miley shares many of the same beliefs as her fellow Kona colleagues Rebecca and Karen, particularly as they relate to the protection of our environment and shoreline, as well as Hawaiian customs. I have an easy time relating to her because she's a local girl through and through. And I don't know how many of you in the audience remember when Konawaina had a different school schedule from the rest of the public schools. You gotta be pretty old to remember that. But I remember that. And that odd schedule was designed to accommodate the coffee picking season. And as one can infer, the children were in the fields picking coffee, Miley being one of them. And I've never picked coffee in my entire life, but I can only imagine that it's hard work, and that's the kind of background that Miley comes from. I like Miley because she has common sense, is easy to talk to, and is reliable. I also have to say that although she has a genuinely calm and pleasant demeanor, she has demonstrated a certain toughness that I really admire. And to a certain extent, I see that in most of the members of this group. And after all, in this line of business, you need to be able to make tough decisions. Miley David. And finally, we have two members who will be entering the final term in office. First, Val Poindexter, District 1, Hamakua, rural South Hilo. Val is, I believe, the only member with a direct connection to plantation-era Hawaii. And when I say direct connection, I mean, you know, she was right there, you know, up until its closure. And in my book, the values associated with those people are very good ones. She has a keen awareness of her community and the issues relating to it. Val, as you know, is our outgoing chair, and so I refer to her as Chairperson Emeritus. Her experience and insight will be invaluable to all of us as we move forward. And I greatly appreciate all of her help in facilitating this transition. Thank you very much. And last but not least, I'd like to introduce Karen Eoff. She represents District 8, Kailua, Kona. She's graciously agreed to remain on as the council's Vice Chair. She's kind, calm, even-tempered, and pleasant. And at the risk of my colleagues making fun of me over the next several weeks, I'm going to say that these qualities make her a perfect yin to complement my yang. Like Matt, Karen is a transplant from California, but you wouldn't know it as she has embraced and adopted the host culture and its practices and customs more than most people I know. And like Rebecca and Miley, Karen has been a strong advocate for the protection of our coastlines. She's also been a staunch supporter of our veterans groups. And finally, Karen was the council's point person for a complicated piece of legislation which was recently passed. It was called Bill 108, and related to vacation rentals. You may have heard of it. Now, regardless of which side of the fence you were on, though, it was impossible to ignore the hard work and dedication Karen put in toward the enactment of that ordinance. And we really, really greatly appreciate that. So again, Karen Eoff, Vice Chairperson. Now, I've given just brief glimpses at each of these individuals. But at this time, I'm both proud and excited to announce that Naleo TV, who's actually filming this today, through its president Stacy Higa himself, a former councilperson and council chair, has graciously offered its assistance in bringing government closer to the people that it's intended to serve. In that regard, he has begun filming, actually, he's completed filming interviews of each of the council members. They're more in-depth than what I just described. They're about a half an hour each, and they make for really interesting viewing. They're running right now, can be viewed either on Naleo's channel or on their website. And I urge all of you to watch these segments. It's very well done. And will provide a better understanding of and give a human perspective to each of these fine people. So thank you, Naleo. Thank you very much, Stacy. Now, since we're on the topic of people, there's another group of individuals that I would like to introduce. And there are state legislators. Three of them are here today. Bear in mind that the governor is being inaugurated as we speak, I'm thinking. So it says a lot that these three guys are here. Because the other ones actually did say they apologize, Lorraine Inoy, I think Inoy is in Washington somewhere. Ron Cochi wanted to be here as well, the Senate President. But let me introduce these guys. First of all, Senator Kai Katali. Representative Chris Todd. And finally, newly-elected, but he's a veteran at all of this, David Tarnes. And I hope I'm not missing anyone else. I just see three. Yeah, I want to say this about our legislative contingent. They've been strong over the last several years. But with the addition of David now, and with the addition of our friend, former colleague, and now state senator Drew Kanua from Kona, I really believe that our Big Island delegation will be the strongest it has been in over 20 years. We need to take full advantage of that. So it's my hope that today marks the beginning of a new era of communication, dialogue, and cooperation between the county and the legislature. To that end, the new members now, you guys don't have to listen to me, but I'm hoping you guys do. You represent the future of this island, and those relationships will go a long way to furthering the interests of our island, and that's after a lot of us are gone. They're being asked to utilize all of their contacts and to engage more actively than ever before in lobbying efforts. Again, thank you, three of you. Really appreciate it. Look forward to working with you guys over the next several months. Again, thank you, three of you. Really appreciate it. Look forward to working with you guys over the next several months. You know, ladies and gentlemen, I don't have to tell you, but our county has gone through a really, really tough, tough time this past year. The Kilauea eruption and Hurricane Lane caused heartbreak for many families. The after-effects are still being felt by many. And let's not forget that we have yet to fully assess the impacts of those disasters on our own county budget. Recovery for Puna needs to be our number-one priority. Whether it means taking a secondary or primary role to that of the administration, we must do whatever is legally permissible in order to help. Other matters which we need to pay attention to will be the looming effects of global warming. We need to educate ourselves on taking necessary steps towards addressing matters relating to coastal planning, emergency preparedness, and the development of disaster mitigation measures. The reason I say that is, from all reports, global warming will cause a higher risk of hurricanes to our islands. Finally, diversifying our one-dimensional revenue stream is a must in order for us to be able to provide the level of service our citizens deserve. The former Mayor Steven Yamashiro was fond of saying that government cannot be all things to all people, and that wisdom holds true to this very day. We cannot allow ourselves to be distracted from our primary goals. I've been a councilmember for many years, some might say too many years. But during those years, I have the good fortune of working with some truly talented and committed individuals. But I will say this, and it's only in my humble opinion. This group, with its personality makeup, youth-to-experience racial, and individual skill sets, has the potential to be the best I've worked with as a unit. And it, of course, remains to be seen whether these special talents can meld together to bring tangible and positive results to our island, but I think it will. Only time will tell. But until then, it has been my pleasure talking to all of you today. Ladies and gentlemen, will you please put your hands together one more time for the 2018-2020 Hawaii County Council? Now, let's take a selfie. Let's take a selfie. Here we go. Paul, come on.
Can we?
Let's go.
All right.
Look at my camera right here.
You need to get used to these.
Selfie.
Osi.
Okay, osi. Here we go. Ready? Oh, I'm gonna get choked likes.
All right. At this time, we would like to recognize and honor some of our special guests that are here. So as I call your name, please rise and give us a little shaka or wave, all right? So Senator, representing Senator Brian Schatz, Sarah Ka'opuili. Sarah, aloha.
And representing Senator Mezi Hirono, Anna Evisuno.
Representing Representative Tulsi Gabbard, Elija Gionson.
Senator Kaila Li'ikehele, mahalo.
Representative Christopher Todd.
Representative David Tarnas.
Representing Governor David Ige, Kate Griffiths.
A council member from Maui County, Kelly King.
And of course, you know, it does take a lot to put an event like this together. So please help us thank the Wai'akal High School Band directed by Elise Reynart. Also, the Hawaii Youth Challenge Academy.
Lloyd and Laney Longakit.
Pastor Sheldon Laxina from New Hope, Hilo.
Mayor Harry Kim.
Judge Greg Nakamura.
Jasmine Souza from Dream Hawaii Studio, mahalo.
Also, Green Point Nursery.
Photographs by Valerie Victorine. Naleo TV Channel 55, mahalo.
Sonia Veriota, Veriato, Derek Rillan, all for the flower arrangements.
The entire crew of the Ho'ulu complex and the Department of Parks and Recreation.
And also, Pepe Romero of CJ Promotions.
And Kelvin Kanne, Mike's Yard Miscellaneous Services for the Mai'leles.
All right. So, we just wanted to share an encouraging word. So we know that at times, your task will be challenging and overwhelming. I'm gonna read this because I don't want to miss out. But we pray for the best and that you will always find strength and hope as you lead the people, always striving for excellence and helping one another. So God bless you all. Yes. And before we end, Loeka has something that he wanted to show you that he worked very hard on.
Everybody dance hula at 8:10 every morning.
All right. Please help me welcome once again the Wai'akal High School Band.